Everybody here?
We're missing Elaine.
Yeah, I think Alan and Elaine is supposed to join us also.
I'm here.
Where are you? Okay. Not as exotic as you.
What a shame.
I think they're traveling around in the.
They should be.
About ten inches of snow out there, Alan.
I see it through my webcam.
Doesn't count.
As long as this melted before I get home.
Yeah, give it a day.
Okay.
It is five thirty-one and we will call the May seventh meeting to order.
We get a roll call.
All right, Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Mr. Lees, here. Ms. Proper?
Yeah.
Mr. Gara?
Here.
Ms. Gort?
Give her one second.
Give her one second, all this marker.
There's somebody in that's Zoom user. I think that's Elaine, so I'm working on promoting her right now.
Like this and tell her to accept the promotion.
Staff, are there any changes to the minutes?
I don't believe any changes to the minutes, but there may be, is there anything getting removed from the consent calendar, Ellie?
There is a change to the agenda on the Eatal residence to a six morning star is being removed.
So the first one is?
Yes.
We're not gonna.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, I don't know if you can see me.
We can see you.
Okay, I can't see you, but you can see me, but why?
Well, we'll note you as present.
Okay, thank you. I am present now.
Okay, changes to the agenda. Do we have any issues to the rest of the consent calendar?
No.
Yeah? I'd like to call up the Blazing Saddle exterior finish.
Mark, you forgot about the comments on historical preservation.
Ah. Thank you.
Someone has to fill in for Steven.
Yeah, he's not here. As part of a certified local government, we were asked to take public comment on the historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. And if anybody is online, they can unmute their phone by pressing star nine or star six to unmute. Anybody out there?
There's one person, but they're not asking.
But they're not commenting. Okay, all right. So anyway, I would like to call up Blazing Saddles.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Do you want them out?
Roll call, Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller? Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner. Before you this evening, I have the Blazing Saddles exterior refinish. I guess quickly, would we just like a quick rundown of the full project? So ultimately, this is a proposal to remove and replace the exterior siding on the Blazing Saddles condo building located at one ten South Park Avenue. It is a thirty-two unit, four of those are commercial, but primarily residential unit. It was built in nineteen seventy-two and since then has had some modifications, additions, et cetera. And now today it is the Blazing Saddles unit or Blazing Saddles Condo Association. Just to preface, the property is legal nonconforming when it comes to density, mass, height, et cetera. And there are no changes with those implications this evening. So this evening is just focusing on the exterior reskin as well as changing out the windows. So the primary, I guess, sorry, I lost my spot. Ultimately, the building consists of painted vertical lap siding or not lap siding, just siding currently with cedar trim elements. This is going to be proposed to be removed and replaced with a few different options. So the first one is going to be a cementitious siding. The second is going to be a cedar siding. And then some of the existing materials, so some of the existing cedar siding will be remaining primarily on the northern elevation as well as the trash enclosure. To get into the details of the proposed siding, they are proposing a horizontal lap siding as well as a vertical siding. And this will also be intermingled with some board and batten in various colors. Overall, staff is finds the proposed fiber cement siding is not, it doesn't deserve negative points because the use of the cedar trimming for all of the windows as well as the doors as it's outlined in policy five for architectural compatibility. So no negative points will be awarded. And ultimately, staff does believe that this application meets the intent of policy five R. So we are recommending it be approved. Additionally, since this is a B, C minor, sorry, the HOA will be required to replace all of the exterior lighting with this application as well. That has been added as a finding or a condition of approval for those exterior lights to be submitted at building permit. This time I'm happy for any questions.
Cliff, I know that we have discussed the alternate use of siding and we kicked around various types of siding and finally settled into being comfortable with the Hardy horizontal siding lap siding product. This is part of what's here. I don't know that we ever really discussed, nor did we approve the Hardy vertical board on batten siding. And I was a little surprised when I went into the regulations and saw that the what was called out there was just Hardy siding. And because they make a number of different products, I think it's important that we say what it is we'll allow and what it is we won't allow. Because should Hardy come up with another product that doesn't suit Breckenridge and somebody wants to use it, we're in a, we're in a difficult place because we haven't been specific about that.
Well, I think I can, I think we are generally comfortable with the the Hardy product. I think if you were, let's say there was a Hardy square or rectangle or something, it was to emulate something that wasn't the siding, then you could possibly say that the style of siding, not the material, maybe wouldn't fit the the general architecture aesthetic compatibility as contemplated under section A of policy five R. But under section B, since they are proposing Hardy with cedar lap siding, just from a materiality standpoint, they wouldn't be eligible for for negative points. But I think, you know, having sat through a lot of work sessions on Hardy really dating back to the early two thousands to fairly recent, I think we've generally been comfortable with it, you know, as a, as a product over those twenty years that we investigated. And then when we have areas such as the historic district where we have other standards, such as the specific dimension of lap siding or something, those design standards would really supersede just the the type of siding it is, but the area like this where we're not in the conservation district. And you really, the design guidelines are looser, there wouldn't be any reason to not allow a vertical, you know, siding Hardy product.
Just for clarification too, I don't think the code specifically says Hardy and talks about fiber cement. Okay. The doc, what, Cliff, one of the things I have problems with is, is the documentation for this project. I look at this and I don't think that, that the town really knows what's going to happen on this building. There's no details. There's no information. I drove by this on the way down there and somebody has done a little bit of exploration on what is there. That building that was built in seventy-two, that's all texture one eleven, which means that that material that's on there is nailed directly to the framing over top of the insulation, if there is any insulation in those walls. So what is going to happen here other than just doing the Hardy siding? To me, I look at this, I read the details and it's a glorified paint job, in my opinion. And I think that the applicant owes the town a little bit more information about what they're going to do. And we have some very good architects, some of whom are present here tonight, that could be retained to do something that has some detail that says what they're going to do. And I understand this is not in the historic district, but it's very prevalent. It's a very prevalent place in town right next to the river. And I think that we should require more of this than what we've been given here.
Well, I think the extent you're asking about is like pertains more to structure and insulation and how it's affixed. And that's actually reviewed at a building code level, which is subsequent to this approval within our development code. That's really not in the purview of the.
Chris mentioned to that, but they've, they've talked about putting cedar trim on. We don't have any detail of where the cedar trim is going to go. Are they going to put it on the corners of the board? I'm looking at this elevation right there and that horizontal siding, when it comes to the corner, are they going to miter it? Or are they going to put a corner board there? There's no information. So we don't really know what we're getting.
I guess I'd beg to differ. I think this is the same amount of information that we see on every plan set that's here. And I think that the, the elevations are clearly labeled in terms of material and color.
I look at this and I see something that a vendor put together that's going to do the siding as opposed to something that an architect does. And I just think it's deficient. That's all I had.
Any additional questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
So for this, I think you called this a class C minor. Does signage come into play and is it, is there any proposal on the existing signage?
So staff's talked with the applicant quite a bit about the signage itself. Ultimately, excuse me. The signage all here is existing signage. There is a few proposed address signs. Those we don't really look at for kind of our signs on private property section. All of the commercial signage that is on the building is staying the same. If there were any changes, they have to come in for a separate class D minor permit that will be handled at staff level.
Okay, help me understand. A class C minor required them to update the lighting but not this and become compliant with the lighting but not the signage?
Yes, so I mean, as of right now, I don't think that the signage is out of compliance. We don't have anything.
That was my first question. Is, is the existing signage compliant? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mark.
I guess to clarify, there are no proposed changes on the signage with this currently. I am unaware if the signage is compliant or not. I would assume that it's a really old permit and it may not be compliant to today's standards. But it's legal nonconforming signs can continue to exist.
You know, I think, Mike, I know at least two of the businesses are new within, like Asobi's new within probably the last six years. And then Lone Star Sports sold the Christie's Sports. Let's say sometime in the last ten years. And so I believe that both of those businesses have compliant signage. The liquor store has been there a little bit longer. But when looking at the amount of frontage for this building and and seeing the, the sign, I, there hasn't been really anything in the sign code that would affect the, the size of the signs even from when the liquor store moved from the location where Lone Star or Christie's is now to the southern location in approximately twenty years ago. So I think Cliff is correct that probably the signage is, is compliant. And I'm pretty confident at least that the Christie and Asobi is because of how recent they've been installed would meet our sign code.
Fair enough, and that's helpful. I would note that if this is an opportunity to bring the building into compliance, we should. If you think that it is, I haven't heard affirm yes. I've heard that we think, but I'll leave it to you. But I do suggest that you check.
That is something that staff can handle. That's not something originally that I had looked at for this project. So thank you for pulling that out.
So just as a point of clarification, when a tenant changes over, do they have to put an application in for a new sign? How does that work?
Technically speaking, no. They can do what, it's like a message copy, copy change, as long as the dimensions, material and placement stay the same, the copy of the sign can change without a permit.
So a new name goes up as long as it's the same size?
Correct.
Good with it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
For the questions. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on?
Our online friends.
Alan?
Susan.
Oh, Susan.
Nope, no comment, no questions.
Susan?
I have no questions.
Elaine?
No questions.
All right.
And it is, it is a public hearing, so we probably should open up the public comment or if the applicant is here, I guess, give them a chance to respond as well.
Anybody online? Do we have a motion on this project?
Yeah, no one was online.
I'll move approval of the Blazing Saddles condo exterior refinish, PL twenty twenty-four dash zero one oh nine.
We have a second. I'll second them. Okay, we get a vote.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hey, we have a combined hearing on the Wildwood Lodge condo remodel.
Okay, excuse me, Mark, just a, a quick thing. Ellie, there's a typo on the one thirty-five Hamilton Court residence. I think it.
Yes.
In the summary point analysis.
Oh, that was.
I think you put, in the summary point analysis, you put down plus three points for the EV. It should be plus two.
That's for one thirty-five Hamilton?
I think so, yeah.
Yes. You. Yes, you are correct. Sorry, there is a typo there that would be plus two. Um. Additionally, it was pointed out to me that the density calculations in here are slightly incorrect and the house is actually seven thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet, which does not affect the, that property is not limited by density. So that's not an issue there. I just want to point that out.
I was just gonna, because suggested call up on the, on the one item, just to make sure that there was more need to call up.
Got a call up on the other two?
Well, we'll note those corrections and get it corrected in the staff report. So the property records will be accurate.
And now I think we can move on to the Wildwood Lodge condos.
So the Wildwood Lodge condos remodel and variance request is a proposal to remodel an existing condo building, which includes an exterior facade renovation, reconfiguring the parking area, replacing the hot tub area, doing a minor roof form change, remodel, a remodel of the interior entryway and a foundation replacement. And then the applicant is also requesting a variance from the required amount of parking to provide a total of forty-one parking spaces, which is eight more than existing. So the Wildwood Lodge is a thirty-seven unit condominium building built in the late eighteen, sorry, nineteen eighties. And so this, this project was spurred on due to some foundation issues which resulted in some emergency stabilization last summer. And then they are working this summer to actually fully replace the foundation. So they rolled a couple other things into that and that has become this project. The site currently has thirty-three parking spaces and a shared hot tub area in the rear. So one of the parts of it for looking at placement of structures, the applicant proposes reducing the existing nonconforming setback in the rear, which currently is at eight feet two inches and they are going to increase the setback and thus reduce the nonconformity to meet the required absolute setback of ten feet. But because they will not meet the relative setback requirement of fifteen feet, staff is assigned negative three points. Looking at parking for the site, the site currently has thirty-three parking spaces and would be required to provide fifty-six spaces based on the current number of units because of the class of this project. The applicant proposes to increase the existing parking to forty-one spaces, which they are not meeting the fifty-six space because they are trying to preserve the required open space on the site as well as preserve existing mature trees. And the site drops off dramatically in the rear, so adding that additional parking would prove a challenge. During the second phase of initial approval of the building when it was originally being built, there was a request for a parking variant submitted, but there was no records of it being processed. And the project was approved with insufficient parking and an added condition that they would come back in the spring to work with staff to address that parking issue, which never happened. So this variance is intended to solidify a decision on that previous request and confirm the existing nonconformance, especially because the applicant is proposing to increase the parking on the site while still maintaining the open space and quite a few mature trees on the site. The, for a point analysis, staff is awarding a positive three points for three EV charging spaces and negative three points for failure to meet that rear setback for a passing point analysis of zero points. And I can take any questions, sir.
The only question I had was about the trash enclosure. Could you explain to me the, it looks like what they're going to do is take the panels out and put the hard wire up at the top. Is that correct?
Yes, so.
What, how does that work with changing the density of that building?
There is an existing provision in our density code that if a space of at least twelve inches in height is added to the building, it is not counted as density because it's no longer fully enclosed, which that's really intended to target trash enclosures to allow people to have a trash enclosure, even if they may not have the density because we do require dumpsters to be fully enclosed. And as part of this project, they're increasing their trash enclosure to add space for recycling to come into compliance with our recycling ordinance.
So the fact that it's no longer an enclosed building?
Yes, means it no longer counts as density.
Thank you.
I just noticed a typo, Ellie.
Yeah, there's, I know there's a typo with the point analysis at the, for the total. I apologize. I don't know how that wasn't caught earlier. It's supposed to say positive three points instead of positive one point.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question about, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're adding parking. How are they adding parking? It doesn't really show where the parking used to be and what's new. It shows dash circles, I think, where they took trees out. Is that?
So.
Where there wasn't parking?
Reconfiguring their parking area. So you can see this is the proposed area and scroll a little bit. This is the existing. So you can see they're taking this weird setup right here and just making it a full row of parking, which allowed them to increase the spaces. And then also by adding a couple more spaces in this area. And I believe one right here. So it does result in the removal of some additional trees, but it also helps them reconfigure that parking area to flow a bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Can we entertain a motion?
I'll move approval.
Hold on, since, since it is a combined hearing, we should first give the applicant a chance to add anything if they want, open it up to them and then also open it up the public hearing to the public, just to, just to kind of, or make sure we do the entire process.
Yeah.
Do you have anybody out there?
Nobody on Zoom for public comment.
I'm afraid he doesn't have anything serious on us. He had questions.
Okay, now, can we have a motion?
I will move approval of the Wildwood Lodge condo. I will move approval of the Wildwood Lodge condos remodel and variance request. P L twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine seven.
With attached findings and conditions?
With, oh, yeah, sorry, with the ta- attached findings and conditions.
Second.
And analysis.
All right, Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Thanks Bobby.
And we have a preliminary hearing for the Camet House addition.
Be with me one moment while I get my, um, packet up here.
All right, good evening, commissioners, I'm Sarah Crump, Planner Three for the record. Um, tonight we have the first preliminary hearing for two zero three South French Street. Um, I do wanna point out a typo in the packet, the address on this, uh, was incorrectly listed as one oh two South French Street, but it is two oh three South French Street. And, um, this is a historic property and they are proposing a full restoration and remodel of the primary structure, including basement addition and rear up above ground addition. And they're also proposing an accessory dwelling unit in the secondary structure along with full, uh, restoration remodel basement addition. So I'll let you take a good look at the existing lot conditions. Um, this is on South French Street on the west side. Um, the property slopes uphill from the right of way and, um, there's street pull-in parking in front of the right of way along the residence property line, um, a retaining wall and, uh, boardwalk, uh, boardwalk, walkway from the right of way to the front door, um, an existing, uh, dirt driveway with, or, you know, gravel driveway. Um, the pro- the existing secondary structure does sit at the back of the lot and it is, uh, a little bit over the property line. This property abuts a shared alley in the rear, um, and it has some existing mature landscaping. The existing house is approximately one thousand sixty-nine square feet and the secondary structure is six hundred and fifty-four square feet. Um, I do wanna touch on the historic, um, nature of the property. It was constructed originally around eighteen eighty-two. Um, and you can see it in this photo from eighteen eight ninety-nine. Um, there was a rear shed roof addition around that time and the secondary structure, according to Sanborn Maps, um, was placed in approximately the eighteen nineties. Um, so along history, it is on its original site. Um, and there are pretty good, um, contextual photographs showing this being like one of the only homes on this block originally. There've been pretty minor, um, exterior alterations, uh, over the years and it has, um, great structural integrity and, um, still holds on to many of the original features, the rectangular bay window, which was, um, very prominent in Breckenridge architecture, um, stealing from the Victorian era styles. And then it has some pretty modest, um, uh, architectural details above the front door and around the window, um, window framing. So as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing a one hundred and eighty-six square foot above ground addition. Um, this will go in the southwest corner of the existing property. Just point that out. Is the patio currently and they're proposing that small above ground addition to go in the corner of the L shape of the original primary structure. And then they will also be, um, adding a full basement and, uh, the de-disstricted, um, accessory dwelling in it. We can look at this property, um, concerning policy three, which is density. Um, it, they are taking advantage of the free density that, and marking a property. Um, you would get free basement density under the landmark portion of the original historical structure. And, um, staff believes that both structures meet the criteria for landmarking and so they're taking advantage of that free density under both structures. There also, um, is an allowance in the historic district for up to five hundred square feet of free density, um, for non-livable garage or storage space. And so they're taking advantage of that for ninety-six square feet on the, um, secondary structure. Um, the recognized above-ground density is, um, let's see, sixteen hundred sixty square feet and so that falls within the allowable eighteen hundred seventy-two square feet at nine U P A, and Steph has no concerns on the density. Um, so I'll go forward with just running through our analysis and covering all the positive and negative points as we move along. For historic preservation, um, the applicant is proposing, again, a full restoration with new structural framing, um, up to the standard building code of today, new mechanical and electrical systems, fully insulating the building envelopes to code, um, new foundations and, um, beneath the historic structures, this will also restore proper drainage around the structures and they're going to restore the historic siding, windows and doors, um, as needed. For this, uh, pretty spectacular scope of work, um, the staff believes the precedent, uh, set previously allows for positive six points for the primary structure, um, which is receiving an above-average public benefit for preservation and restoration. And then, um, precedent also states that for this level of restoration to a secondary structure, um, that is worth three positive points. Moving on to some of the design standards in the handbook, I'm just gonna move Alan and Elaine out of the way for a minute.
I'm fine with that.
We'll bring you back.
Okay, I can't see me, so hopefully it's looking at me, I have no idea.
So, in the design standards, under, um, the first policy that we looked at was thirty-seven point five. Um, and this talks about the location of additions on historic structures. Um, for this very small addition, which is less than fifty percent of the existing primary structure, um, it is allowed to, um, be an addition that is without a connector. Um, and they are receiving a positive one point for this addition because they're not disrupting the existing sidewall planes of the front primary structure. So these walls, um, let's get my pointer here. So, this plane and this plane are not changing, the, um, addition will be between the two and you will not be able to see the addition from the front facade. So that warrants, um, positive one point in the development code. Right, this, um, addition is gonna be differentiated from the existing structure with the use of vertical siding. Um, and it will be vertical wood siding in the width and style to match the existing historic siding, but it'll be vertical to differentiate the new portion. Moving on to windows, doors and glazing, um, there are quite a few changes on each facade, so I'll just go over those briefly. On the east elevation, they're going to, um, have a new, um, a new window in the historic opening to replace an, a non-existing historic window, so that's this top up here, the existing one is immovable and they're replacing it with a non-movable window. And all the other hi- windows on the front facade are historic and those will be maintained. On the west elevation, uh, you'll have the new windows for the new addition. Um, and below grai- grade window for egress from the basement. And then this top window, they're proposing to increase the size. Uh, we'll, I will get to the points associated with that change here shortly. And then I believe they're also proposing to change the size of this lower window, which is also his- an historic opening, but not an historic window. On the north facade, uh, those are three historic windows and they will be maintained and restored. And then on the east elevation, again, and two additional double-hung windows for egress in the new basement, um, bedroom, restoring two historic windows, two new windows on a new addition, and this rear door is proposed, um, to be enlarged, both widen and the height increased. So Design Standard, um, fifty-seven states that, uh, you should avoid changing the position of historic doors. So staff has assigned negative three points to that change for the door. Um, but we do ask the question of whether the commission agrees that that does violate that standard, which says, avoid changing the position of historic doors. So does enlarging the door change the position? But we do find that the proposed door, um, meets the architectural style and standards that we would wanna see on, uh, a historic property. And so it's not in violation of policy fifty-nine. Design Standard seventy-seven, um, this states, do not close down or enlarge original openings to accommodate smaller or larger windows. The proposed increase in size in this, um, west elevation for both of these historic openings, uh, we believe fails that policy. Regarding policies ninety-five, ninety-six and, um, ninety-one, the proposal does meet the architectural standards for windows and door openings and their appropriate sizes and shapes according to staff for, um, this historic structure. Also talk about the windows, um, proposed for the secondary structure. Uh, we did quite a bit of research looking at, um, some existing great photography provided by Ellie of all of the historic sheds in the, um, district and, um, we found the window placement is very haphazard, there wasn't a lot of uniformity in the placement of windows on, or doors on secondary structures. Um, this was just a, uh, direct result of using the materials that were on hand at the time to construct those. And so we agree that the proposed windows and doors, um, they're kind of a mixture of sizes and shapes on the secondary structure. Um, and there's not a lot of uniformity about their placement, maybe a little bit so on the front. Um, but it does meet the requirements of Design Standard ninety-one, ninety-five and ninety-six for the secondary structure. And we will ask if the commission agrees with that. Under policy twenty-nine, which is, uh, um, regarding removal of historic structure or restore historic fabric, excuse me, um, we've assigned negative six points and this is, um, because of the window openings proposed on the rear of the historic sheds, there's three of those, here, here, here. And then also proposed skylights on the historic shed and proposed skylights on the um, main primary residence. So combined the removal of historic fabric there, staff believes warrants six points, we'll ask if the commission agrees. We consider the proposal for the solar system that will be on the helm. Um, this is replacing an existing solar system. So currently the solar panels are on the, um, south and west elevations of the historic structure. This new proposal takes those his- uh, solar panels off of the historic structure and puts them solely on the new addition. Still on the rear of the structure and not visible from the, from the right of way. Um, staff believes this better conforms to our policies regarding, um, solar placement in the historic district. And we will ask if the commission agrees. There are no new building materials proposed for this, um, renovation. So the historic building materials and then the new wood siding on the addition, um, all comply with Design Standards seventy-one and seventy through seventy-three. And then the modest architectural details that are proposed, mostly just window details and, um, some of the, um, proposed trim around the new door and window openings on the secondary structure. Um, those are believed to comply with Design Standards ninety-one through ninety-three. Let's go back to the proposal here, um, regarding building height under policy six. Um, currently, both structures are actually sitting on, directly on the ground. Um, they will receive new foundations and this will raise the height of the primary structure by nine inches and the height of the secondary structure by seven and a half inches. Um, but overall, they will still be within the required height of a mean of ninety, or twenty-three feet and an overall height of twenty-six feet, so staff has no concerns about the proposed building height changes. The applicant is not proposing any additional landscaping. Um, this is because, uh, they do have quite a bit of mature landscaping in the front yard currently. Uh, so a couple of mature spruce trees and four aspen, uh, two in the front, two in the rear. There's very limited room for additional, uh, landscaping, um, and so Steph is, um, believes that the existing landscaping does comply with policies one thirty-one through one thirty-three. Um, if we were to require more landscaping, um, it may in negatively affect the existing mature trees. The existing home is not in conformance with required setbacks. It's in its hex- it's in its historic position, um, approximately half a foot off the north property line. And then the secondary structure is actually, um, several inches over the west property line, um, into the shared alley. But we are recognizing that those are existing non-conforming setbacks and we are not requesting that the applicant move the structures from their historic position. Under policy eighteen R and the design standards regarding parking, um, the proposal requires four parking spaces, three for the main house and one for the accessory dwelling unit. The parking will remain on the south side of the lot using the existing driveway access. They will be paving the driveway, um, to be better in conformance with required engineering codes. Um, but the parking will not obstruct the front or primary facade of the historic building. Under policy thirty-three A and R, um, they are proposing one new electric vehicle charging, uh, charger at the secondary structure and that's worth one positive point. And they're also, um, adding four hundred and eighty-four square feet of heated paving, uh, in the patio area and on the, um, below-grade steps to enter the storage area for the secondary structure. Um, under the new ramp policy, renewable energy mitigation program, this, um, amount of heated paving does not incur any negative points. For Policy 51, the accessory dwelling unit does get positive three points for the provision of that unit. It is within the required one-third of the primary structure size, so it's 758 square feet. But when we were reviewing this project, one of the character area specific design standards, it's Design Standard 127, states only for this character area that secondary structures should not be used for living space. That's actually discouraged. So recognizing that's sort of a conflict, staff did assign negative points. So it's a net zero points for the accessory structure. And we will be asking whether the commission agrees with that point allocation. It is requested that both structures again become local landmarks. Staff finds that the property does meet the requirements to be a local landmark and we will ask if the commission agrees. So just to summarize the current point analysis, staff has found that this proposal violates Policy 77 and so would fail for not maintaining the historic window proportions. Under positive points, there are currently 14 positive points. Positive six for the historic reservation of the primary structure. Positive three for historic restoration of the secondary structure. Positive three for de-restricting the employee housing unit. Plus one for the EV charger. And again, plus one for maintaining the alignment of the sidewall planes on the historic structure, even though there's an addition. Summary of the negative points. Currently, we have negative six points under Design Standard 23 for the removal of historic fabric. Negative three points under Design Standard 57 for changing the position of the rear historic door. And negative three points under Design Standard 127 for utilizing the secondary structure as a living area. So currently, the project is failing one priority design standard and has a score of two points. We do have quite a few questions for the commission to go through. I think there are 10 of them, but at this time, I'm happy to take questions. And then I think the applicant would like to make a presentation. Thank you.
All right, Alan, do you have any questions? For Sarah.
Great presentation, Sarah. Very thorough, as always. Just one question on the gable window on the east elevation. How the one that, one of the windows that's in violation, how much different is it in size from the current window?
I think the applicant can answer specifically, but I think it was several inches wider.
Okay, all right. I wait. Applicant.
It's not, they're not changing the window on the east elevation. They're changing it on the west.
Oh, oh, so it's the, it's the gable and the lower windows on the west. Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Elaine, did you have any questions, Sarah?
I just like, I have the same questions about those windows. Like, how big were they? Were there windows, like on the, on the bottom level, were there any windows already? How much bigger are we making them?
That is a historic opening on the bottom. And I, I think the change in size is, again, it's several inches. It's not significant, but it is a change to the historic opening.
Okay, and then for the door that's being enlarged, I guess, there's no historic door there, right? So they're not like trashing an old drawer or anything like that.
The opening is historic and the door is not.
Okay, all right. And I guess I just think like, bigger doors make it easier for people to get in and out. I guess we don't have anything in our codes to
We did discuss that a little bit at the staff level. Perhaps the authors of the handbook had some foresight. It's not a failing policy to make the door wider. It is just negative points, so you can do so. But it is a failing policy to change the size of the historic windows.
Can you explain like what a failing policy means for the windows? Does that mean that they cannot enlarge them? Is there a way to waive that because it's in the back of the house? Or what's the standard procedure for this? Or they just have to make them smaller?
So in the Handbook of Design Standards, priority policies are considered absolute. So they're not allowed to change the size of the historic openings.
Okay. All right. And I noticed that just we're doing negative six points for the fabric. But that doesn't have anything to do with the windows being bigger and taking away more of the historic fabric that has to do with the skylights, right?
Correct. The window enlargement on the primary facade was not taken into consideration for Policy 23, which is the removal of historic fabric. We don't, we wouldn't want to double dip and, you know,
Okay.
give them negative points twice or something for something that they're doing. So the removal of historic fabric doesn't include those windows being, windows being larger.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Susan, do you have any questions for Sarah?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. You really did a lot of work on this. It's a lot of detail. At this point, I have two questions. I'll have some other stuff later. One has to do with the landscaping and I realize, I mean, it is May, but it is winter. And when I went by the house, it did look as though it was pretty bare. I mean, there are those two spruce trees and I think an aspen tree. But I didn't see anything next to the house that was like, no. As opposed to that picture, I didn't see any, anything up against the house. Now, I don't know if that's stuff that dies back in the winter or what, but it seemed very barren to me. And so I wasn't really in agreement that there was no landscaping needed. I would like to see a little bit more than what currently exists. Otherwise, I thought, you know, it seemed kind of stark. The second question that I had has to do with the parking. When I was there, there were three cars parked in the driveway and it was full. And it wasn't clear to me how they could add a fourth space or how they could be tandem because of the width of the driveway and the amount of space that exists there.
So parking spaces have to be 18 feet long by 10 feet wide, I believe, is the dimensions that they have shown on the site plan. Sorry, what? 18 by nine, so a little shorter than what I said. And they are proposing to pave the driveway and move it a little bit to the south. So that may allow for some additional parking. They're moving this first space up into the north and then the tandem spaces behind. So directly abutting each other, they do fit on the site plan.
Okay. All right. It seemed a little tight. But
It will be tight. Tandem parking, it absolutely will be tight, I agree.
Okay, and I'll have, I'll have comments when we get to Design Standard 127.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mike.
Chair, Sarah, really nice to report, thank you. I hit on landscaping too. Just a few small clarifications. Janet has some new aspens proposed. And then by the process of excavating for a new foundation, you're going to lose whatever foundation plants might be remaining, which is part of Susan's question. So maybe offline, staff and Janet could have a discussion about some landscaping or at least replacing what's lost. No further questions?
Ethan.
Thank you, Mike. Great report, Sarah. You obviously put a lot of work into it and, and had all the pertinent information that I needed. Therefore, I have no questions.
Sarah, great job. And you know, this is a complex project and I think you, you hit all the topics there. Question that comes to my mind is this building directly on the property line, pretty typical with these historic houses. Is that kind of what they did?
Yeah, I mean, obviously they didn't have modern surveying techniques. And it may have been, I know this was a combined lot, so it's lots three, four and part of five. So it may have, you know, the lot lines may have changed over time compared to where it was sitting historically.
Might have been some snow on the site.
There might have been some snow on the site when they placed the house.
No, we definitely have seen quite a few, particularly outbuildings that end up being just off of the property line. In this case, I mean, there is a platted alley, but you know, it's never been built, you know, for vehicular traffic and we don't have any intention to. So I think we're supportive with the encroachment license agreement to keep the building in its historic location. There, I think the most recent one we had where we had a building that crossed the property line was the Ploss Residence, which was on North French. It's the one that had the little, it used to be Lily Yellow House, now Little Gray House with the addition. They had an easement actually to the north on the, on the northern property there. And again, we, we, as long as the neighbor was okay, we actually advocated for it to stay in its historic location versus being brought on the property and squared up. If there
And also see the neighboring property to the south, the adjacent residence and then is on the property line essentially the same way as this home is on the north property line.
If there was like a vehicular access behind, then we'd probably want them to bring it on. And we do have an allowance for that in the code for that situation. But since, since there really isn't any vehicular access back there, we're supportive of like staying where it has always been.
Yeah, where I built in DC and Maryland and Virginia, these older buildings typically were kind of lax basically laid out. And it usually occurred on the alleys in, in the district. They had alleys behind all the houses, so. The, the text mentions a bear with me a minute, I've got a note here somewhere. Encroachment license, is that how you handle it here? Because where, where I came from and those localities that I mentioned, we would simply ask for a variance that would go with the property as a recordation on the property into the future. So what, just help me with, what's an encroachment license?
It basically allows for someone to have a portion of a structure in towns right of way or alleyway. So, and it's, it's, yeah, we do it routinely.
It's, it's a recorded document, really an agreement between the town, which is the property owner of the alley and in the property.
It goes with title.
It goes with title, yep, since it's a recorded document.
Alan, do you have any questions for the applicant? Would you like to make a presentation? Let's do that first. Go ahead.
Janet, would you like any?
Yes, yes, okay. Janet Sutter Lee, I'm the architect for the Komet House. And Sarah, that was great, thank you. A very well-organized presentation and thanks to Chris too. I've spent a lot of time working back and forth with Sarah and Chris to get to the point that we are at right now. Because this is, as you can see, a very complicated project. So I did want to go over some of the things and maybe mostly with clarifications. The owners have had this property now for a couple of years and it was very much their desire to provide some employee housing and be players in the community to help with some of the community needs. They're planning to use the house as a part-time residence. So that's kind of where we started from on the program, which was really interesting because this is such a different shed than what you usually see around town and a whole different set of parameters than our, kind of our standard historic project. So I did want to talk about the openings a little bit to maybe elaborate a little bit on Sarah's presentation of the openings. So I'd like to start on that east elevation of the main house. So the opening she has circled there, if you look at the historic photograph, you really have to zoom in, but that upper window, we are trying to exactly replicate the window that was originally there. Right now, it's a smaller window and it's a double-hung and nonhistoric because somebody at some point added a loft for that upper level. So I think they put that in for ventilation. So if you were to look at the historic photo, we're trying to match that exactly. And obviously, we'll be able to do that once we've done some interior demolition and can identify exactly where all the historic openings are. So I just wanted to clarify that. So that guy isn't a problem. So going to the west side, I, I apologize, I did not realize that was a failing policy. The owner had expressed some interest in making that upper window a little bit wider since there's a loft up there. And then the lower windows, again, the historic sides and head would be maintained, but we were trying to make a taller window back there. I did not realize that's a failing policy. So we aren't going to change those openings and you can just forget all about that one. So we do have to put new windows in, but they would be within the historic openings that are currently there, obviously, so that we don't fail the project. So that takes care of that little issue. I did want to go over some of the openings on the shed on the secondary structure and kind of talk about, you know, what, what the dilemmas were there. Of course, being an outbuilding, you know, there's very few openings because this was originally designed as an outbuilding. And there's a mishmash of stuff. I do have photos, I brought more photos of the shed because you can't really see it on that one picture in the packet. It just sort of shows part of the east facade. So I brought that, but right now you'll see the north side on these pictures. You know, got to have operable windows over the kitchen area and the bath area for light and ventilation. Same down on the north corner. So we felt like this was kind of the minimal that we needed to add. Now, my idea for the front of the east facade of the shed is we have the two historic garage door, if you will, openings. And my idea there was to use those openings because the garage doors are not historic and actually kind of recess the wall plane within the front facade. You can't really tell that from the elevation. You can kind of tell on the floor plan a little bit, but have that somewhat recessed so the garage door openings read very clearly. And then we really accentuate where those openings were by the new combination, again, a little bit of a mishmash of windows and corrugated siding to accentuate where the garage doors were. So I am going to pass the shed photos around so you can look at them while I'm talking. There's five, five of them, but I think it, it helps for you to be able to see the exact condition of what the shed is. Because I think maybe one clarification with what Sarah was talking about is we do have to re-side the shed. We cannot save that siding. The main house, yes, the historic siding's in pretty good shape. It's It's, you know, there have been some restoration efforts over the years. We may have to replace some of those boards, but on the shed, we really can't. So the idea there is to replace it with like materials and have a couple combinations and, you know, pretty much replicate what was originally there. So let's see here. I want to now talk about this list on staff recommendations, because I think that's a good way maybe to kind of keep this organized if possible. Item number two on the staff recommendations that they have on your list. Well, let's talk about item number one, recommending six positive points. I appreciate that and I think this really is a six-point project. We are, we're going right down to the studs. We are doing all new plumbing, electrical, and the full structural restoration of the, the buildings in their current locations. So I appreciate that. Now, number two seems to be kind of a long list of items. And there's one item on number two, which talks about design standard 23. And that is about the points, the negative six points for the removal of historic fabric. So yes, we recognize and accept the fact that we're adding new windows, especially on the shed, well, to the shed, and that that's going to warrant positive or negative points. And we have to do that for the livability aspect of providing a housing unit out there. On those pictures I just gave you, there's a note here talking about the enclosure of one historic door opening on the secondary structure. If you look at the photo that has the kayak in front of it, what that is referring to there is the door on that little kind of four by four bump out, which is kind of a added on storage thing. So obviously, you know, we're not going to use that as a operable door into the house, but we'd be happy to maintain that as a siding feature. And we've done that on historic projects before, where there's something on the siding or a door, whatever, that is no longer operable, but we maintain it to show the sequencing of what was there historically. So that's an option. I didn't feel like that was really part of the list. You can see right there, kind of the mishmash of things we have going on in the shed. Oh, the other one that's pretty good to show is the south one, that window on the photographs I just gave you. Because you can see what that south on the shed looks like. So it is sort of a conglomeration of things that they really did collect. Well, that's the north side and you can see the condition of the siding there. The south side on the picture shows that one window. Anyway, I hope that gives a little more clarification on the current condition of the shed and what the existing openings look like. So that was just also a clarification on that one historic door they're talking about us losing. We can certainly do that. So I think what I'm down to here, my, my biggest, I only have one issue really with the, the whole, the whole presentation, and that has to do with the point analysis. And item number three for staff recommendations on your list, and that has to do with design standard 57 and this door on the main house that is on the south side. If maybe we could pull up the elevation of the south side of the main house. So I looked up 57 and what standard 57 says, which is not a priority policy, is to avoid, the exact wording is to avoid changing the position of historic doors. And underneath that in bullets are, it's especially important on significant facades. And the second bullet point item is avoid adding additional doors to facades that are visible from the street. So I, I'm, I'm in disagreement that we should be assigned a negative three points for that door on the south side. The reason why, that is the original opening. We have not changed the position of the opening. The left side of that door opening is the historic jam situation. We have shown a six eight door in there. We are happy to keep it at six foot four tall. That's what the historic opening is right now. And I'm not even sure that a six eight will work with our roof condition there. So that's not an issue. What the big issue is, is we are proposing to, that door is currently two foot six inches wide, 30 inch wide door. And we want to go to three feet. Right now, there are two doors into the house, the front door that we don't want to mess with on the east side, and this back door, we have two openings now. They're two foot eight and two foot six, and we really need to have a three foot wide door. It's really difficult to get furniture into these smaller doors. So what we're proposing on that back door, we keep the original position. The left side of the historic opening is maintained. If we keep it at a six four door tall, which we have no problem with, what we're looking at doing is actually moving the right side of that door jam six inches over to be able to have a three O door. You know, we can even keep the historic framing. We can keep the historic head. Yes, it won't be functional anymore, but it's going to have to get sistered with a, you know, like a five and a half inch LBL or something. But we would only be, you know, taking away historic material on the right door jam. So I felt like adding another negative three points to this was not and I, I think the other way maybe to look at it, if there was nothing on that shed wall right now, I mean, there's a door, but let's just assume for the discussion that that was a blank wall. If we were to add a door and a window, that would fall under the other negative points for historic fabric. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what we're looking at right now, which is a whole nother negative three points on top of the negative six we already have. So I'd like everybody to maybe kind of think about those two policies and how, how that works. But I think that we, that door opening being enlarged should be part of the negative six that we're already getting for loss of historic fabric. So that was my really only issue there. And then I think that's about it. In response to Susan's comments about the landscaping, you know, I'd like to hear what you all have to say about that. Because if you think we need more, we'll have a look at it. I know we don't want to get trees up close to the house. Typically, we want to have them a little bit more further in the front yard. But, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear what you all have to say about that because we kind of left it as is for now, so this is a great time to really discuss that. I think, Mike, you were talking about the aspens that we're proposing. Those are already there. Those three on the north side, those are existing trees. Oh, one of them said N?
Yeah.
Oh.
I know you have the three existing right to the north, but.
Oh.
Yeah, you have one.
Sorry. I should have looked at that. I didn't realize we were putting an aspen tree.
These are existing though.
Those three, no, those are new as well in the back. But the three I thought Mike was talking about were the three on the north side.
Yeah, there's one, there's three new ones.
Right, so and two of them are in the backyard. But I, I was thinking Susan was talking mostly about the front yard and I forgot we had an aspen in the front. So I should have looked at the landscape plan before I came over. So anyway, what, you know, I'd be happy to hear what you have to say on that. And I think that's all I have. If anybody has questions or clarifications, yes.
Yeah, well, first of all, I was, I was talking about the front yard, not the, not putting in more trees, but more shrubbery, you know, maybe, you know, once the foundation work and all of that, I think Mike made a good point about that. But something to, bad use of terms, but to spruce it up, I think would be helpful. As far as the skylights are concerned, are, are you keeping the original roof? So you're just?
Yes, and the reason, so we looked at these long skinny skylights. The nice thing about the shed is you can go inside right now and see all the framing because there is no wall. So we know where the openings are. We know what the existing framing looks like. And, you know, we're trying to work with, you know, what we have for roof framing in there when we get to the skylights to make sure that we're not cutting out anything more than necessary. And we can get them between rafters. I don't know what the rafters are like on the house until we do selective demo. But I think the, the thing that you are going to lose with the skylights is the one by sheathing that's sitting on top of the roof.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And, and just to comment on this design standard 57, I mean, the way Sarah has allocated points, you still come out with two positive points, especially if you, you know, take a step back on the, the window situation. So I'm not sure I'd worry about it.
Well, yeah, and that's true because we do end up with two positive points. But the, it's a very big offset on positive and negatives for historic restoration and then loss of fabric. And I'm maybe a little concerned about precedent that sets on future projects, but really more of the interpretation of, do you guys really see that as a negative three point hit right there? So that's more of my discussion. So.
Alan, did you have any questions for Janet?
Yes, and I think so as much for Janet as for staff. So there are a total of six bedrooms and only four parking spots. I, I'm curious, with deed restrictions, do this parking have to go with deed restriction? If it's, I mean, to really make this work, the main house is only going to have two parking spots.
I can answer that. So the requirements for the main house, which has four bedrooms, they're required to have three parking spaces. And an accessory dwelling unit is only required to have one, no matter the number of bedrooms, so four total. So they are meeting the parking requirements.
So you've got, you know, I'm just thinking you've got two, two families having to coordinate moving cars in a tandem situation because of that.
What's the status for parking on the street? Because there's like three spots in front of the house, right? Are those hourly parking or what's?
Those are public parking spaces and we would not allow a project to go forward if they're proposing inadequate parking on site for a residential project. They do have to meet the parking on site and they currently are.
But if you live there, you can park on the street. You just have to pay for the parking or can you get a permit?
You cannot get a permit for parking on the street unless your property is deficient in parking. And this property would not be deficient according to the code. So they would not be able to get a parking permit for street parking. I mean, privately, they could arrange something, but they would not be eligible for a permit through the town.
So I think just to finish up and I'll be done. Janet, I just think your, your client's going to, I mean, this is a logistical issue they're going to have to work with. It seems like a huge inconvenience to have to move cars around for, I mean, unless they only ever plan to have two cars of their own there.
Well, and I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, this is not the optimal parking situation here by any means. It's the only way we can get parking on to the site.
Yep.
We looked at, you know, having some of that yard air, something in there, and that didn't work either because it was messing up the front yard and more negative points. And so, yeah, it's, it's not ideal and we all recognize that for sure, so.
Okay, yep, that's all I have.
Elaine.
I don't have any more questions for Janet, no.
And Susan, you're, you're done with your questions for Janice?
I'm done with my questions for Janet. I have some other comments.
Thanks Chair. Janet, nice work. I've watched this project and I'm happy to see it happen. Tiny question, could you, with all of the site work that happens, move the gas meter away from the primary elevation?
Well, I would sure like to think so. I mean, we're changing the electric meter next to the, the door in question. Yeah, I, I don't need to tell you what XL is like these days. It's unbelievable what the requirements are. So right now, I'm leaving it on the front until we get to that point. But, yeah, I would love to have that not on the front facade.
Okay. And then the shed is really fascinating to me because I don't know that we've seen one of these. And I, it certainly the town's appreciation and the awareness of the opportunities the sheds are evolving. So I, I think this is great. This is more of a comment than a question. That, that sort of messy vitality, that mishmash of those sheds is very much the shed vernacular, so. Don't formalize it too much. I mean, it shouldn't look too perfect.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair.
Beautiful project. I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition. There's a lot going on there. I don't have any questions or comments.
Janet, great looking design. I particularly like the way that you set the doors and the windows in on the shed with that detail and the next plane back. Other than that, I have no questions, comments, or anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Can we?
Any public comment out there?
Does anybody online wish to make a public comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Thank you.
Anybody in here want to make a comment?
And I would like everybody to go through the questions.
Right. So do you want to read those since it's quite detailed and we'll have each of the commissioners?
Yeah.
Or do we just want to take one at a time and ask the question of each of the commissioners? How would you prefer to do that?
Makes sense where the commissioners, you know, I think have read, read the questions and they, you can say like, in regards to question one, this is mine and just go commissioner by commissioner versus, I guess, like prolonging it by reading them out loud and.
Let's, let's start with Alan, with the commissioner comments and the feedback.
All right.
And questions.
Okay, question one, I agree with the total plus nine points for historic preservation. Question two, minus six for the fabric, yes. Question three, I, I say no. I don't think changing the size of the door qualifies as changing the position. I would think that the, the changes to the opening, the position hasn't changed. The changes to the opening would fall under the negative six points under design standard 23. So no negative three points there. Four, designs 77, yes, but it's, that's irrelevant because the applicant, Janet, said they're going to change that. I do agree that, that it fails. Five, I agree with the random placement, yes. Six, I don't agree with the code, but I agree with the point calculation. So it seems to be a contradiction here, but we, our job is to follow the code. So I do agree with the point analysis, but I think in a work session, we should discuss. So I do agree with the point analysis, but I think in a work session, we should, um, discuss changing that. Seven solar panels, yes. Eight local landmarking, yes. Nine, uh, yes, ready for final hearing and ten, uh, no more comments.
Lane, can we hear from you?
So I am going to just say I agree with everything he had. So yes, for everything except for the number three, which is the door positioning thing that, I don't agree with minus three points. And then number ten, um, love the shed. To me, that just is what Breck is all about. So thank you for all your hard work on that. It's going to be super cool. Can't wait to see it.
Um, okay, uh, on question one, I agree. Uh, question two, um, I agree. Question three, I, I think that Alan makes a good point. Um, and I do not agree with that. Um, question four, uh, standard seventy-seven. I'm glad to hear that Janet is willing to go back to whatever the original sizes are. So it will not fail. Uh, question five, um, I agree. Uh, question six on design standard one twenty-seven, as, as it stands now, given the current language, I agree with the allocation of points, but I would suggest that we consider, um, proposing an amendment to design standard one twenty-seven to add, unless the living space is a deed restricted accessory dwelling unit. Uh, because I do think that, you know, that's a current need and we should be encouraging that. On question seven, I agree. Uh, eight, I definitely agree. I do think this project on question nine is ready for final hearing and I don't have additional comments.
Mike?
Thank you Chair. Um, uh, one, agree. Two, design standard twenty-three, agree. Uh, fifth, design, three, design standard fifty-seven, I had semi-agree functionality and codes matter. Four, seventy-seven is no longer relevant. Janet said she'd adjust that window. Um, five, ninety-one, agree. Uh, six, the ADUs, Susan said it best, uh, we should cons- consider clarifying that. Seven, solar panels, yes. Uh, local mark, landmark, eight, agree. Uh, nine, final hearing, agree to be ready. And then, um, it, further comments, it's a really great project, Janet. I, I went through it very carefully and, um, hats off to you. It's a, uh, there's really a lot of, very good things, very good execution, and I think it's a, a very relevant project to what can be done. And so hats off.
Thank you, Mark. Um, on number one, historic pres- preservation, I agree. Number two, standard twenty-three, I agree. Number three, as everybody else, I do not agree with the three-point analysis. Number four, agree. Five, agree. Six, I'm in cahoots with Susan over here and Alan and, and agree we need to re- revisit design standard one twenty-seven. Number seven, solar panels, agree. Number eight, local landmarking, of course, I agree. Uh, we are ready for the final hearing and I just want to reiterate, I think this is incredible part, uh, project. I thought that the report by Sarah was incredible. Um, all the information was there. Great job, Janet. I, I read it three times and, and I was impressed. So thank you.
You're clearly having fun.
Okay, with regard to number one, I agree. With regards to number two, I agree. Um, I don't think that the minus three points for the, um, three O door is warranted, so I disagree with that. Um, I agree with, uh, number four. Um, I agree with number five. I agree with number six, but think we need to visit that in a future meeting. I agree with the solar panels, agree with the landmarking, and I think we're ready for final. And, um, as with the rest of the panel, I think it's a great looking project. Thank you for making our town look nicer. All right.
Great. Well, we'll come back in the future.
Thank you Janet.
Yeah.
Thank you Sarah.
Did that bug you? I did too.
I looked at the drawings over and over.
I did too. Studied it for a long time.
What does that say about us?
Thanks. I'll be brief. Good meeting. Chris just reminded me, um, we do have some active BGV applications in right now, so just, you know, don't avoid ex parte discussions. They'll be coming in on several things, including subdivisions and amendments. So, um, that's coming soon. You'll probably be seeing those in late May and into June. Um, as far as the council meeting itself, um, it was a swearing in of two new council members, including Mr. Steven Gerard, which we're very proud to see him moved on to that, um, realm. And Steve stepped right in and asked some really good questions at the first meeting, as well as Marika, the other new council member, he seemed to be fitting in well. So, um, it's exciting to see a little new blood on the, on the council. And part of the meeting was organizational where, um, Kirsten Crawford, our town attorney, kind of got the council up to speed on some protocols, including ex parte discussions, that kind of thing, as they relate to these quasi judicial, matters that come to the planning commission and then end up on the council's, um, agenda in terms of if they want to call them up or not. The Entrada zoning ordinance was approved on second reading, so that was kind of the last step with Entradas to just place it into Land Use District Five. And, um, demolition by neglect ordinance was approved on second reading. Nice job, Ellie.
So Mark, does that mean Entrada is now annexed? That's.
Yes. Yep. Yep. So Ellie got that through the finish line, so we're, um, pleased to have those demo by neglect, uh, changes done. The only other real item that was discussed, I gave the council an overview on the TDR program and the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. Did that with you guys a few months ago, I think. Thought it, it's helpful when we have a new council come on for them to understand. And in fact, you might have seen in the paper, got an article out of that because, um, we were talking about, okay, when we did the original jump, Joint Upper Blue Master Plan in ninety-seven, we were forty-five percent built out. When we came back in two thousand and eleven and updated the plan, we were seventy-five percent built out. We are ninety-three percent built out today. That's residential. Um, commercial is a little smaller, but anyway, it, you know, obviously we're approaching that ceiling and redevelopment is more of the world will be, um, moving into. But, um, I also wanted them to understand how it works in terms of transfer density to workforce housing projects. As the council did commit to do that. So we are actively stripping density off, uh, town-owned properties and extinguishing that density to account for the density being created on workforce housing sites. So the example coming up, at the next meeting on the fourteenth, I'll be bringing a resolution that, um, provides all the density for, um, Vista Verde Two, formerly called Alta Verde Two, um, all the density there, which is close to a hundred units of, um, density. And, um, that is being removed, will be removed from the, um, Ice Arena property. So that's one of our big reservoirs of density that we have. So anyway, I wanted them to kind of understand kind of the context for the whole transfer development rates and that, so.
So Mark, when you talk about the ninety-three percent, does that include those units that are going to Alta Verde? And are the units that are being transferred from the Ganoa Lot up the hill included in that or excluded in that ninety-three percent?
Yeah, it's, um, if they haven't been built, they wouldn't be included. Yeah.
So the ninety-three percent means?
Been built out of, and, and a hundred percent would be what it's zoned for.
So the seven percent
Yeah.
is lots that are recorded but have not been built on? Is that correct?
Correct.
So those lots that are not recorded up above Timber Trail are not included in that seven percent because they haven't yet been recorded. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's actually technically correct because we need to, um, well, now we're gonna, but that density is going to be shuffled up there from down below. So the density's on, yeah, density's already on the books, so it's just going to be moved up there.
Whole number of units and it'll just now be in a different location than what is technically the location that's attached to you now.
The, um, the real nuanced thing that I didn't even get into at the council is we're really at ninety percent of what the zoning allows, but we've determined that like three percent of that is just, it's not going to happen for various reasons. So we have what we call our absolute build-out number and then a realistic build-out number, which we know is pretty much what can happen. So.
Ask how many actual units that seven percent represents?
It's about six fifty or seven hundred units.
And then about what percent of that might be multifamily, BGV, workforce?
Uh, I, Chris, you have any idea? I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, Mike.
Most?
I, I think it's harder to figure out what the, the workforce total of that. That number, the percentage, I would think it's probably in the neighborhood of like a sixty, forty, sixty percent multifamily. And then forty percent single family lots, like multifamily being really anything other than a single family lot. If I were to guess.
Four times six. So maybe two hundred and fifty single family lots, many of them very challenging to build on.
Correct. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, that was it with the, the council meeting. The only thing else I wanted you to know is, um, we received four applications for planning commission. Got several good ones. A couple I haven't even seen yet, but the couple I did look good. Um, and, um, council will be holding interviews on, um, next Tuesday at their meeting and making the decision that night on who the new commissioner will be. So they will be able to join us on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, thank you. The ace council. Yeah.
All right. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting at seven twelve.